Call to order. The City Commission meeting for Tuesday, October 19th, 2021. Let the record show that all commission members are present. First item up is the Order of Business. Ms. Carlson, are there any changes to the Order of Business?
President Decker, Commissioners, there is no change to the Order of Business.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson. Any questions for Mrs. Carlson on the Order of Business?
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Otterman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Walla. Any further discussion on the Order of Business? Hearing none, all in favor of the Order of Business as presented, state aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that Commissioners wish to discuss? Hearing no discussion on the consent agenda, I'd look for a motion.
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sobeluk. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Ms. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Mr. Otterman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Our first item up in administration and finance this evening is we have a presentation from Southwest Water, 30 Years, Presentation and Proclamation. And we will have the manager, CEO, Ms. Masid. Evening.
Good evening, Mr. President, Members of the Commission, honored guests. How's that? Thank you. Thanks for having us here tonight. We're here actually to say thank you and thank you for your partnership and to celebrate, actually, 30 years of water for the City of Dickinson and Southwest Water Authority is also 30 years old this year as a political subdivision. I'd like to take note that we do have in our audience today, before I start, our Chairman, Jim Otterman, who is from Billings County, Steve Schneider, who is our Stark County Representative, Larry Bars, and Jason Benz, who are from the city, represent the City of Dickinson. So if you're a city resident, when you vote, you get to actually vote for three members of our board. And then we also have Ladino Shields with us, and she's our CFO and office administrator. So they are here to support me, I guess, and to thank all of you for our 30 years. So I do have a presentation, and I would go through that for you. As I said, we're 30 years old. And this is a picture from April of 1991 of the signing of the bill with Governor then George Sinner for Southwest Water Authority. As I said, Dickinson's had water now for 30 years. I think actual delivery date was October 17th of 1991, but the official turn-on and water service to the city was October 22nd, 1991. It was a great day for the City of Dickinson and for all of the region. Here's the treatment plant in Dickinson. This was taken prior to 2005. You can see the plant, the water reservoir, as well as the lime ponds. And our current state, on Broadway, we have the treatment plant. We also have a new water treatment plant, a finished water pump station, and a residuals handling facility. So currently, we serve about 56,000 people. We have more than 7,300 rural customers, 34 contract customers. We serve 33 communities throughout the region. We have water available at three crew camps. We also serve two other water systems, Missouri West in Morton County and Perkins County and in South Dakota. We project to sell about 2.4 billion gallons of water a year. Right now, we're at about 1.9 billion. We operate three water treatment plants now. We have two in Dickinson and one north of Zapp called the OMND Water Treatment Plant for Oliver Mercer North Dunn. And this map shows you the service area. Everything in blue is served out of the treatment plant in Dickinson. Everything in green is served out of the OMND Treatment Plant. We are actually five public water systems. The beige areas, we tie into Missouri West Water System in Morton County. So we're in charge of operations and maintenance for the Southwest Pipeline Project. There was a transfer agreement. We are in existence for 30 years, but January 1st of 96, we took over management of the project on behalf of the state of North Dakota. So we have over 5,200 miles of pipeline. We cover 15,000 square miles. And we have 35 booster pump stations and 31 reservoirs in our system. We have a replacement fund, which currently has a balance of about 24 million, but we expect to spend that down by about 7 million this year and next. That is for items that are beyond extraordinary. It's in the Sentry Code that we do that. So every thousand gallons we sell, money's put in the bank for that account. Here's our Board of Directors. They're publicly elected. Half our boards up for election every two years in the June primary. Like I said, we have members of our board here. We have one representing each of the 12 counties, two from the City of Dickinson, and one from the City of Mandan. We are, the state of North Dakota owns the Southwest Pipeline Project. It's administered through the North Dakota State Water Commission and now Department of Water Resources. We have been under construction since '86. Water came to Dickinson in '91, and we've been under construction ever since. We currently have about 620 on our waiting list, system-wide. This shows you by county where they're located. And this map shows you a year ago where all those waiting list customers are. So the Authority and the Department of Water Resources is taking a three-pronged approach on how to address that, to increase their transmission capacity, do hydraulic improvements in certain areas so we can add customers, as well as a new signup area. We just opened bids. The Commission authorized approval of this contract. We're paralleling pipeline in three directions out of Dickinson. That's for all regions. In the blue area on our map, that's about 21 miles at about little over $9 million. Completion date for that is the end of October of next year. We're also doing a signup campaign for Grant County and surrounding counties. It covers actually part of five counties. This is an underserved area. So if you have property there, have friends there in Grant, Morton, Stark, Adams counties, tell them to contact us and sign up for water, because we are in the middle of a signup campaign. We have over 400 signed up currently in this region. It was underserved to begin with. There's a lot of open areas, so this is part of our strategic improvements, or our improvements to provide water throughout the region. This shows you our source of funding and our total funding. We're over $405 million to date through state and federal dollars, as well as some bonding bills that have been repaid by the project. We have some quotes from some of our customers, as well as others, such as Director Bars and our Governor and Majority Leader. And our repayment, we do pay back, a return on investment or capital repayment. This shows you the payment by contract and by rural customers. It's billed per thousand gallons for our cities and other contract customers, and by the rate in the minimum for all our rural customers. So total to date, this breaks it down by year, we're over 82.5 million. That's been paid back to the state of North Dakota. This shows you an overall project map. Basically, everything south and west of the Missouri River, except for Sioux County and McKenzie County. However, we do cover areas in McKenzie County around the Grassy Butte Service Area. Here's some of our pipeline installation. That middle picture in the background, you can also see the construction for our second intake at Lake Sakakawea. I like the Henry machine in the top. And then some of our tank construction or water reservoirs. And with that, Mr. President, I'd answer any questions, but we also have a proclamation because
Do.
On October 21st, it is the National Imagine a Day Without Water Day. And it's a day for us to all to imagine what life would be what like if we didn't have good quality, clean drinking water each and every time you turned on the tap, which is something we're very fortunate to have here in southwest North Dakota. And it's because of our partnership with the city and many others, and the support we have received that we're here today. And you have award-winning water each and every time you turn on the tap.
You do. Thank you so much for everything you do as a leader in, you know, in Southwest Water, along with the board members. I know, I really appreciate it, and I'm sure all the Commission and the citizens do appreciate all the hard work. Fresh water is so important to just our livelihood. And I think sometimes it's taken for granted. But I know we appreciate the ability to turn on the tap and have, like you said, award-winning water on a daily basis. And we're always thankful for all the hard work that you and your staff do over the year to keep that product in our system and help us promote, you know, southwest North Dakota as a whole. So it's important for our development.
It really is. Thank you, Mr. President. It speaks to quality of life, economic development. We can do it without quality water.
It is. Any, Ms. Masid, if we had any questions for her before I read the proclamation?
Thank you for the wonderful water. I remember before Southwest Water in, I just suppose not to drink water many of the times.
Yes, I think we all did. You're welcome. Thank you. And like you said, it's kind of, you know, you don't know the value of water till the well runs dry. So if you turn on your tap and nothing comes out, then you think of us, but...
Mary, what's our current ranking nationwide in terms of taste?
Well, three.
All right.
Four in the world, three in the nation, and we just won best in states. We'll be going back to DC in February for another national water taste contest.
Well done. And we had a staff member at the hospital who was from out of state, and when she came here for an interview, the taste of our water was one of the determining factors of deciding to take the job here in Dickinson. So you guys are doing a good job of not just providing good water, but providing good healthcare as well.
Well, that's good to hear. Thank you. Yes. We've had doctors say they're very pleased. It's improved the health of their patients considerably.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's definitely a quality of life component, so...
Great. Any other comments or questions for Mary? Not all. Proceed with the proclamation. Imagine a Day Without Water, October 21st, 2021. Recognizing the annual National Day of Advocacy for Imagine a Day Without Water, held on October 21st, 2021, as an organized effort to educate the public about where water comes from, where it goes, and the challenges local water utilities and providers face. That quality, accessible, and reliable water is critical, and it is necessary to maintain and rebuild our water systems. Whereas, the Southwest Pipeline Project and the Southwest Water Authority has delivered quality water to the City of Dickinson for 30 years and delivers southwest North Dakota residents more than 2 billion gallons of water per year. And whereas, the Southwest Pipeline Project is the lifeline of our communities and is essential to the quality of life and economic vitality of the region and the City of Dickinson, a day without water would be a public health and safety crisis, limiting the abilities of safety personnel, such as hospital staff, as well as businesses and homes to function. And whereas, water infrastructure is necessary for a thriving economy, and a single nationwide day without water service would put our lives and economy at risk. And whereas, water infrastructure is aging, and we can help secure a better future for millions of Americans who don't have reliable water service today and the generations to come. Whereas, valuing and investing in infrastructure needs for, excuse me, needs for reliable, quality water systems provides a path to economic recovery. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Dickinson City Commission recognizes water is essential to the quality of life and the economic competitiveness, and acknowledges the importance of educating the public about the value of water through the Imagine a Day Without Water campaign. Be it further resolved that the City of Dickinson is dedicated to investing in safe and reliable water, infrastructure, and calls on our state and federal partners to continue much-needed funding and innovation to protect and restore our critical water infrastructure. And I would ask for a motion to approve this proclamation.
I'll move.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Pass this to Ms. Carlson, so she can get it to Mr. Winningham, and we'll get you a signature on that. Thank you so much for your presentation.
Yes, thank you.
I appreciate the very speed of your presentation. I'll put it that way, because it...
You're welcome.
You hit the bullet points. That's what's important.
Yes.
So thank you so much.
Yes.
And thank you for all your hard work. I understand this may be your last time in front of us.
Could be. Yes, depends.
Okay, all right.
Yes.
But you've done a great service to this community. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Appreciate your support. Happy anniversary. We have cookies in the back. And you can fill your water glasses out in the hall. How's that?
Thanks, Mary.
Okay, our next presentation is by the Chamber of Commerce, and this is by Executive Director Carter Fong.
City Commission, Mayor Decker, I got the note there to hit the bullet points, so that's what I intend to do for the Chamber, too. Also, great opportunity for me to remind the audience that one service the Chamber provides to the community is to cut ribbons to celebrate milestones, such as 30 years of water in the community, and such as the opening of a new city hall. So when the time is right, next opportunity to cut ribbons is November 18th, Thursday afternoon, November 18th. We hope each of you might mark your calendars and see if we're ready at that point. My name is Carter Fong. I'm the Executive Director at the Dickinson Area Chamber of Commerce. I began at May. I began in May. We have 450-plus Chamber business members of the Dickinson Area Chamber, representing all sectors of the economy. I'm here first to say thank you. Thank you for four years of a partnership where we've made a subsidy request, and you have partnered with us, providing funds, but also participation in the events we provide to the community. Currently, we are in the second year of a two-year commitment on your part at $10,000 for our fiscal year of 2021 and 2022. That was presented to you, I believe, by my predecessor roughly a year ago at this time, when the Chamber was probably in a very different and uncertain place. They were rolling out their membership drive a year ago at this time, really not knowing if Dickinson area businesses were going to be able to make any commitment to the Chamber because we had many restrictions and COVID on the rise in our community a year ago at this time. So I'm here to review that and to let you know and be transparent that the Chamber is in a much better place than we were a year ago at this time. I think my predecessor and Board of Directors navigated difficult times well. I'm happy to report that our fiscal house is in order. We have a full team at the Chamber, including myself, our Marketing and Communications Director, Megan Classen, and our Administrative Assistant, Betty Fred. We have sufficient operating reserves. Our Board of Directors passed a balanced budget for our fiscal year 2022 at their September retreat. And our membership drive is underway, and we are reaching for an attainable goal, but a membership increase not based on dues, but based on participation in the community. Okay? And so we hope that our partnership with the City of Dickinson would continue. While you are delivering essential services to our community, we are doing things that I believe are also essential, such as welcoming new people and entrepreneurs to the community, putting on quality-of-life events and informative events, okay, such as Harvest Festival, State of the City, Lemonade Day, promoting youth leadership and entrepreneurship. And I'm biased, but I think those things that we do, we do them well, and we plan to continue that. Okay? In the document that I submitted, it was the fourth and final page, but I'm showing you the existing 2021 and 2022 commitment on your part for $10,000. We have received both of those payments. I believe the 2022 one was advanced in part because it viewed as COVID relief and needed at the time. I've been transparent in saying we're in a much better position now. I read my newspaper. I know that you just recently passed your 2022 budget, I believe. So there is no urgency necessarily on our part. I'm hoping you might set yourself and the Chamber up for whatever the best time might be annually for the Chamber to report to you. Maybe it is October annually. Maybe it's not. But I'm showing you what an increased partnership to 15,000 could look like. It was on the fourth and final page of what I submitted. It might include additional funds for Harvest Fest, based on the growth of that event, funds to Leadership Dickinson because of your expressed desire to support youth leadership in our community, Develop Dickinson, helping our business professionals add tools to their tool belt, increase participation in our ag-related events. And we would hope to partner with the city on upgrading signage, maybe not only, or not just at our own building, but at the four locations that we manage around town. We want to modernize the look around our community. You know, we're putting up letters one at a time where our volunteers are at those locations. You heard from the Chamber a year ago at this time, although we've already worked together, I wanted to introduce myself to you and to the community and to ask if you had any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Fong. Any questions for Mr. Fong? I know the one comment, and I think I appreciate your comments on the signage. We are in that process. I don't know where, if we're ready for an RFP quite yet, to find out what those signs are going to cost, so we can maybe adjust our budget to, I think we set aside 60,000?
60,000 for two years, so 120,000.
All right. So Commissioner Frederick thinks we might have to adjust that. But we do want to improve those, those "Welcome to Dickinson" signs, and we don't want it so you have to put up a single letters at a time any longer. So maybe it's something that can be programmed remotely.
Sure.
I'm sure the technology's there. Again, pretty much access everything with our phones or a tablet nowadays, so... But I think that's important, to get those entrances looking good. I do know that the participation in a lot of these events has really been great. Every time I go to them, I know Harvest Fest was, you know, wonderful again this year, and Lemonade Day is always a joy to participate in.
Thank you.
So it is. I have a lot of fun with that. So any other comments, Commissioners, or questions for Mr. Fong?
It's a good partnership, hopefully. Can you make it continue to work out for both of us? Thank you.
Your request, then, for the increases, the 5,000 for 2023?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. I think we can have a...
And with this subsidy, President Decker and Commissioners, with this application here, we will put it in our '22 look at for '23's budget with their fiscal year starting October 1st to September 30th. That fits with our budget then, and that's how we did it for the other two years. So we did that. So we will look at it at that time.
I think it's dollars well spent for what you do for the community, so...
Thank you.
I would like to say one thing, Mr. Fong. With this partnership, I have heard from many staff members, because of this partnership, the possibility of going to a lot of events with that partnership with the Chamber was very well received. You had great events that we could actually attend on a daily, on a day basis
Sure.
For our staff, for leadership programs and stuff that you had, and you and Christina, because Christina was part of that, too.
Absolutely.
But we do appreciate that and thinking of us for that way.
Thank you.
Okay.
So we don't need to take any action today. This is part of our next budget cycle. This is just a briefing for today.
Yep.
Okay, cool.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
Okay, next item up is our monthly financial report, and we'll have Accountant Maury. Welcome.
All right, so we'll start right off with our Treasurers' Report as of September 30th, 2021. So you can see our total unassigned cash on the bottom there. We're just over 11 million. The last monthly report, we were about 12.4, so down 1.4 from last month. We are still right on our projection to end with a little over 7 million at the end of With our investments, no major changes to our investments. We're still right around that $40 million mark, and as we've talked about previously, most of our changes come at the beginning of the year with our contributions. Then moving on to our 1% sales tax. So the blue line is 2019, the red line is 2020, and then the dark line, the dark brown line, is 2021. So in September, you can see that that 2021 line is higher than it was in both 2020 and 2019, or about $6,000 higher compared to September of 2019. So that's about a 1.4% increase. First nine months total, we're still down about 306,000, but slowly making up that difference. So we're down about 6.6% from the first nine months of 2019. We show this slide here just as a reminder to the public that we collect our sales tax and have it in both the 1% sales tax fund and in the half percent sales tax fund. And then in our hospitality tax, so again, blue line, 2019, and that dark brown line is 2021. So you can see in September as well, we're a little bit higher in September 21 compared to September of 2019, about $19,000 higher, which is about a 27% increase compared to September of 2019. So the first nine months total, we're down about 60,000 compared to the first nine months of 2019, so about an 8.2% decrease there. Our occupancy tax on a similar trend, we're almost exactly where we were in September of 2019 in our occupancy tax, down just about $1,000, right around the $44,000 mark in our September 21 collection in occupancy. First nine months total, we're down about 50,000 compared to the first nine months of 2019, so just about a 20% decrease there. And then in our oil impact, so at the very top of the blue line, you can see we just barely surpassed September of 2019, just about $31,000 higher compared to September of 2019, about a 2.6% increase. And you can see we're a fairly significant amount higher compared to where we were in 2020. We were about 1.2 million in September 2020, closer to 1.5, between 1.5 and 1.6 in September of 2021. First nine months total, we're down about 476,000 compared to the first nine months of 2019, so about a 4.6% decrease. So this slide here, this is for our general fund expenses and revenue. The chart on the left is our general fund expenses. Our benchmark through nine months is 75%. So you can see in the red on the circle chart, we're 68% expended, so we still are under budget at this point in the year. And then the chart on the right, in the green, we've collected about 88% of our budgeted revenue. So we're ahead of schedule there, and I know that will come down as we end out the And then the final slide here is our enterprise funds. So again, 75% is our benchmark. We've spent about 67, just under 68% in enterprise fund expenses, and then collections for... And then in collections, we're a little bit ahead of schedule. We're at 82% collected out of our enterprise fund budget. So with that, I'll do my best to answer any questions, and city staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Maury. Any questions for Mr. Maury on the city financial report?
My usual questions on accounts receivable. Last month, we had 45,000 in 91 days and over. This month, we have 100-some thousand. But last month, we only had 7,000 in 61 to 90 days. How is that possible?
Yeah. So we actually had some, a bill that was coded back, and I believe it was... I can get you the information exactly what it was, but I believe it was Dickinson Public Schools. It was just the timing when it was entered. So that's why it showed up as over 90 days, even though we had just actually sent it out last month.
Okay.
So that's why it shows up that way on the report. But I can definitely get you that information.
Sounds good. My only question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Now, I look for a motion on the monthly financial report.
So moved.
A motion approved by Commissioner Frederick, second by Commissioner Walla. Any further questions for Mr. Maury, comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Mrs. Soblock?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a 5:00 timetable, a public hearing and public comments. Our public hearing for the rezone request for acre subdivision, and this will be handled by Planning Director Hadley.
Thank you, Mr. President and Commission.
Good evening.
This would be Ordinance 1730, and it'd be the first reading of this ordinance. It's actually the zone change that would allow the acre subdivision in the ETZ to move forward. It was heard on the October 6th Planning Commission Agenda and recommended for approval, not only the zone change, but actually the plat itself. So staff would also recommend approval of the first reading of Ordinance 1730.
Thank you, Mr. Hadley. Any questions from Mr. Hadley on 1730? Hearing no questions. This is a public hearing. We'll open up the public hearing. Anyone from the public has any comments on the acre subdivision rezone request? This is Ordinance 1730. Please come forward, state your name, let us know your concerns about or questions on the rezone request. Anyone with any questions? If you're watching online, you may phone in at area code 701-456-7006.
The conference is currently empty. You will hear silence or music on hold when connected.
Again, this is a public hearing. Anyone is welcome to come forward, state your name, let us know your concerns, or if you have any comments on the rezone request for the acre subdivision, Ordinance 1730. You may also call in if you're watching online, 701-456-7006. Anyone with any concerns? Anyone has any concerns? Not seeing any concerns or comments from the public, not hearing any from online, close the public hearing. I don't think there are any additional comments from Mr. Hadley. You have before you the map and the staff report. Commission, what is your will?
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve Ordinance 1730 by Commissioner Oderman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Walla. Any further discussion, questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Soblock?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Our next item up, we have also at 5:05, we have public comments, not on the agenda. If there is anyone in the audience that wishes to make any kind of comment on an item that may not have been on the agenda this evening or is on the agenda, and you wish to discuss it with the city commission, please come forward, state your name.
Hi, good evening, Mr. President and Commissioners. My name is Alec Johnson. I'm here today just to check, to see if there's any updates to the unfinished collector roads that were brought up at the October 5th City Commission Meeting, as well as the planning and zoning meeting last month, specifically down in the southeast corner of town. It's Fifth Street, Sixth Street, and Seventh Street southeast. Those all being unfinished, the result is a lot of traffic coming down residential road, River Drive. Just checking to see if there's any updates on that. The last that we had spoke, it was talked about potential to be added to the capital improvements program, or a request was made to just do a traffic study on the area. Just checking to see if any updates have been made on that or what's intended for that. And I can just take a seat and listen to what you guys have to say. Thank you.
Ms. Carlson, have the staff had any further discussion?
Honestly, President Decker and Mr. Johnson, I would just state that our interim engineer is out today, and I will get an update, and then I will get your information and have a message sent to you. So I will get something for an update on that, okay? Because I don't have an update for you. I'm sorry.
I think if anything, one of the areas we should consider is that at least Fifth, for now, is a collector.
I wrote it down, so I will get an update.
But I think there, we need to have an analysis of a lot of the different roads within the city that collect. And I know they're on the CIP, or they were at one point. Even the expansion of 15th was discussed at one time, connecting that over to 30th. I think we need to make some progression on that, so... All right. We'll get your information, Mr. Johnson, get back to you. Anyone else have any comments? Questions? Anyone online, please call in, 701-456-7006. Anyone have any comments? None on the agenda? Now I'll close the public hearing for comments not on the agenda. We'll move back to our normal agenda, and if I'm correct, I'll get this up and working here. We have HR up next. So, this is Dominik. You have our monthly HR report?
I do. Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. First on our list is the Utilities Manager. We have opened that position and have it advertised in several places. We're going to leave it open for about a month and taking applications at this time. We do have a couple candidates that have applied. The Water Reclamation Facility Operator position is one that we just recently made an offer, and that position, that person is in the background phase right now. Senior Water Reclamation Facility Operator, we had an internal opening, and one of our utilities operators moved over to Water Reclamation Facility as a senior operator. Communication Specialist, we have two positions open right now, and they are currently doing interviews, second interviews for that position. Police Officer, we have several openings there. We had a few in background. There were two that we had to rescind offers. One is still pending the background, and then they reopened it, and they have three from the next round that are pending backgrounds. Animal Control Officer position was opened up. We did do some interviews, and they're still kind of in that interview phase, looking at doing second interviews for that and maybe some tours. And then we did hire the Seasonal Tree Data Collection position again that we had opened last year for mapping trees and that sort of thing, so that has been filled. That's all the positions that we have open at this time. If anybody has any questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Dominik. Any questions for Mrs. Dominik on the monthly HR report? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next item up, we have in public safety, we have our monthly police report. And we have Lieutenant Klausert here today.
Good afternoon, President, Commissioners. Happy to be here tonight presenting on the September monthly numbers for the Dickinson Police Department. Out of the gates, total calls for service of your interest is going to be 2,520 for the month. You look at a steady upward trend throughout the year last year. Some of that to be had with warming up, and what you pay attention to in the future is see what the cooldown months do for us, so some of that not surprising. Good to see still with the staffing issues that we're having up there, openings and training new officers in, which ends up tying up a few different things. But top five calls for service and cited traffic violations. On the left there, something I think if you look at at the very top, suspicious persons and vehicles, kind of a good number to look at there when you think that people are paying attention to what belongs and what doesn't belong in this community, calling those things in and having us verify, that's a little bit telling of that. So we'd like to see that number, and it could be higher for all it's worth, but gives tips to a vigilant community. Down at the bottom, welfare checks. Going to the other side, speeding, no surprise on our cited traffic violations. And down at the bottom, of care required. Feel free to interject or interrupt if you see something that you would like me to expound on further. Total accidents for the month sitting at 66. Unfortunately, three of those had injuries involved with them. We never want to see that. I always want to see that number lower, but three injuries are never good, so as far as it relates to traffic safety. We do have our speed sign out right now, as you've seen around town, and we have a new officer that's assigned to that that's laying those numbers out with flow of traffic and such, Officer Sanders, which has been really helpful for directed traffic enforcement for Patrol Division. And so that'll be something to pay attention to down the road, how that affects these numbers that you see in front of you. Traffic stops for, if you have any friends out there, Commissioners, President, that don't think officers are given the benefit of the doubt, we're three to one on warnings of citations, so 327 to 129, kind of a good number for our officers to say, yeah, they're given the benefit of the doubt often. Next graph on total arrests, it's a little bit fuzzy when you look at it, but just pay attention to the red line. Warrants are the high number for the arrests for the month, drug-related number two, and then domestic violence number three in there. Can speak good to the drug-related and the warrants. Yeah, domestic violence, of course, you always want to see that number flattened out, but we know we have some issues as it relates to drugs in the community, and so good to see those numbers where they are, officers being proactive and getting after it. But the tip of the tongue conversation, every time we get to bring it up in front of you guys and anybody else in the room that can hear us, is behavioral health, mental health, and our total calls and attention of resources to that particular facet of the job continues to be a heavy load for the officers, men and women alike, and they... It's just an important thing that you guys are all looking at and talking about as we head into 2022 and those talks. We do have some stuff internally happening related with our crisis intervention team, where the police department's pairing up with the Department of Human Services, or Badlands Human Health out here, looking to get together a team that can better serve some of these individuals that are affected by mental health in our community that we're dealing with a lot or unique situations. Training for the month, we had a big third quarter mandatory one, use of force, force-on-force training, TASER recertification involved in there. That was going to be a reality-based, scenario-based day. Our officers are going hands-on. We have SIMS guns involved with that. Going back, they're suited up, and here we had played out some, reenacted some responses to some citizens in town where things did not go well, replayed some of that out for the officers, kind of the what-if game, hindsight 2020, which was extremely beneficial. Only had two file, had some injuries with that, so Mr. Beck was happy with us on that, coming paperwork his way. FBI card training down the line there, that's child abduction response team stuff, and so we follow a lot of the, along the lines with the national protocols as that goes. We actually sent about nine, I think, in total down to that training. And also have a tabletop exercise coming up in November that is going to be range across the spectrum of 15 different entities coming to the table, reenacting child abduction of sorts in our area, and how we would respond to that, use resources if that, God forbid, ever happens. Alzheimer's awareness, and then at the bottom there, that SKIDS training that you see, that's going to be our officers working in conjunction with K9s on TAC teams. So when the K9 is deployed, if a K9 was deployed on a SWAT call-out, how our officers handle and integrate with a situation like that. So some good trainings, total and all, for the fourth, for this last part of the year, we have about 650 hours scheduled out for officers to be trained on, so we're trying to keep our officers trained. From the investigations end of it, 25 new cases, 14 of those are digital forensics. Those are heavy loads, time-consuming, take a lot to get through. You're looking at like six hours, seven hours on each download to get completely through on a real thorough job well-done sort of thing. And then the three background checks are another labor-intensive one there with our new hires. Those are taking up a couple weeks of manpower on a detective to get through and vet appropriately. We had assistance with a BCI drug search warrant that we got a stolen handgun out of a storage unit here in town. I'll highlight that, the stolen handgun thing. Handguns and firearms are another one for us. We have been seeing a lot in the reports coming across, recovering. So a lot of different reasons as to probably why that is, but it's an important one that we're paying attention to and trying to address for the community. They have a total of 51 open cases. They've had six call-outs after hours, and two of those were for sex offenses. They had three unattended deaths, and then one burglary they had to come out and process. What's going on in your public schools? So we've had our SROs have been busy this first portion of the year. Our middle school, we've had 26 calls for service. High school, 13. Elementary, five. Don't have a breakdown of those here included, but we have a new SRO in the middle school, and she's been doing really well. We've had a lot of compliments to the job she's been doing in there, so very happy about how that's playing out for the community. They also have been pretty proactive on the bullying end of it. Kids can be mean at times, and so the middle school, high school, elementary school is cognizant, having us come in and do some education on that. Been a really good thing. We've had some good positive feedback on that. The Alice presentation that you see there in the middle, that's an active shooter presentation response in a workplace. How would you respond? We were in the Southwest High School, if that situation, God forbid, ever occurs, doing a presentation to their staff on a situation like that. And obviously, they met with the counselors and to how to provide assistance within the schools in furtherance. Our gals out front that you meet when you come in through the front door, our records department, 52 fingerprints taken, dealt with 17 registrations of sex offenders. Two of those offenders are just offenders against children, child abuse offenses and such. Been some training related to just records management to our staff to get our officers cleaned up on some of the small details on data entry and stuff for the state purposes. And on dispatch, so our 911 center. Again, pay attention to the red on these ones, that we had 5,060 calls, non-emergency calls for service for the month, and outbound calls back about 1358, and emergency 911, 837, which is down just a smidgen in that bar graph, but relatively close as a whole. They got two openings up there still in dispatch, but they did just hire and got a new one started the first of the month, Ms. Grace Thornton with us, and so we're excited about that and hopeful she's with us for quite a while. They went up to the schools and give some presentations on opportunities with our communication specialists to the younger generation, let them know there is a bright future career, exciting career in that field. And then we had two of our senior dispatchers took off to some communication training in Helena, Montana. Animal shelter, 25 dogs and 25 cats were... Animal shelter, 25 dogs and 25 cats were impounded for the month. Of those remaining at the shelter for dogs, there are none. They were able to get returned to the owner or rescued. There are still nine of the cats that are there, and of the 25, four were returned to the owner, 11 were rescued. Fall has been a busy month, as Mr. Fong was in here talking about, chamber stuff with their events we try to attend, and anything else out there that we have a place or relevancy, so we, fire department had their 9/11 to begin with, Memorial climb, 20-year anniversary, was a really well-done job by Chief Presnel and their auxiliary staff and personnel, so we were really happy to be a part of that over there at the BAC. It was a good crowd, nice speaker. And then on into the Harvest Festival, we were over there, as you guys know well about that event, and had some presents. We did provide some car seat checks. We do have a handful in-house, and it's kind of a funny one, surprising these people who do this, they get kind of excited about car seat checks, and so we did do a few of these in the community in the month of September. Schools upon us, kids in school, a lot of kids in the vehicles, so. You see our new jumpy castle there? If you guys have anybody in your network that wants this thing out at an event, or you know that we can get this out at an event, we would really ask you to reach out to us. We want to get it out. It's getting a little bit cold, obviously, but in the future, that thing is a monster, and anybody who saw it in person, it's way bigger in person than what it is on a picture. The Chief Presnel and his guys are going to be shortly behind, getting a fire truck. They'll probably outdo us, but. Another big one here to keep on your radar as it goes, it's been some coverage in the paper, our local press giving some nice coverage, the City of Dickinson Police Auxiliary. We, again, we pretty much have a group of people in our community that took hold of Chief Presnel's auxiliary program over there, copied it, put their own stamp on it, and moving forward with a support system for our sworn staff in-house. We're pretty excited about how this is going to look. They're going to be doing onboarding for families that are hired by us, be it if they have a wife or kids, or if they just have a parents or family. When they come in-house, we're going to give them a tutorial of everything, expectations, they will, I should say, give them some resources and connections within a secure texting app that they have, so that mothers and these people, they kind of get this communication amongst them that they feel is important, because us in the profession oftentimes don't think things are very important that probably are, and the wives let us know that, but it should be a really good thing moving forward. They've had a really good response and some donations from the community, and something you guys to pay attention to, and you see it down the road. And then, ah, the RV parking reminder. We've been trying to splash this in advance. We encourage anybody to get this out, that sees this, sharing it with their friends and neighbors and such, November 1st through March 31st. The RVs off the streets, reminder. Don't ask me for some of the specific language offhand, it escapes me right now, but that is easily searchable at our Dickinson website, or Dickinson Gov. website, or the city, the police department's website, in our Facebook page, we have it on there. So share that as we get close to November 1st. And as always, integrity, respect, and teamwork for you guys and the people in the room here, and I take any questions you guys may have for the police department.
Thank you, Lieutenant Klausser. Any questions in the commission? As always, you guys are doing a great job, along with all of our services. I really appreciate all your hard work on a day-to-day basis, so. We'll move right into our next item, and that is planning this evening. We have a special use permit, explosive storage at 2780 East Valard Street. This will be presented by Planning Director Hadley. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President and Commissioners. This item was a special use permit, as you said, it's Resolution 31-2021, and it's for the explosive storage at 2780 East Valard. The Planning Commission also heard this item on October 6th and recommended approval of this, and staff would recommend approval of Resolution 31-2021 as well.
Thank you, Mr. Hadley. Any questions for Mr. Hadley on this special use permit? For the general public, this, that did not watch the planning and zoning meeting, this is for Wood Wireline Services, and it is a local company with a... explosive material basically will be used for their wireline services, so.
That's correct.
Any other questions for Mr. Hadley from the commission? Questions or concerns? Now I'd look for a motion.
I'll move to her first.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Walla.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none will vote. Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Soblock?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have no items from building code enforcement this evening. Commissioners, we're to item 10. This is your time. Is there anything you wish to discuss that was not on the agenda this evening?
I just wanted to, Mr. Winningham isn't here, but I wanted to thank him and city staff for putting the youth commission together. We had our first meeting last night, and it was really, really good. They brought some concerns that they hoped to address, and I'm excited to see them get to work, because I think it's going to be a good addition to the community.
I do too. And for those wondering where Mr. Winningham is, I know the commission's up to date and staff. Mr. Winningham was down with the legislature today. They were hearing for projects for the billion dollars that the state's sitting on, wondering how to spend their money. So Mr. Winningham brought some of our projects down and did a presentation down there with Representative Lafore before the Senate, so that's where he is this evening, and hopefully we'll get some good news on some of these projects, so. Anything else, Commissioners? If there's nothing else, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We are adjourned.